This is Kinneland Board of Education Public Hearing Number 2023-2024 School District Budget. It's April 25th at 6:05 PM. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right for public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, Kinneland Board of Education has paused notice of this meeting. They published the suburban trends on January 22nd, 2023. Posted it, they Kinneland Public Library filed for a posted on the district website. Ms. Keen, hold your board. Ms. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Ms. Perella?
Here.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Pechselli?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher? Kisa, walking away. He's down there.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Donalds?
Here.
Fudge allegiance. Fudge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, a united republic, four justices, one nation, and our individual liberty to govern as well.
Okay, we'll begin with the presentation of the 23-24 school district budget. So we've put together this presentation for the public hearing in the 23-24 budget. And I apologize in advance to the administrative here that appear that's probably seen like two dozen times in some form or other. And the rest of the movement, that basically it's the same presentation in whoever you with different numbers. But here we go, different colors, different year. So welcome to the public hearing.
And I just want to thank everybody that's here and those folks that are from our admin team. Because we did meet for at least too much straight weekly to really delve into the budget and also with the board. Because our, I don't know how many times our committees met in February and March with double meetings. And for the folks in virtual or for the folks that are here tonight, when we have our committee meetings, we're talking five, six hour night meetings. And then conversations and meetings after the meeting. So it was quite a bit of work. Slide one.
So budget goals. As you can read up here, all programs that are currently operating the schools remain intact. We didn't cut any programs. In fact, we added to some existing programs here and there. And our goal is to stretch our dollars as far as we can within our limits. We don't get that much additional state aid or tax levying for these. So it's always a, you know, a problem every year, taking a lot of money and working within that to achieve our goals for the whole district. This year, we're, this year actually, we're applying for a couple of different grants. The rod grant to do our, two of our roofs, the security grant to update securities of all the different schools. And also a technology grant, the E-rate, to upgrade technology in two of our buildings, Kinneland and PRM. So we can get, hopefully we'll get a little bit more money to achieve our facility goals in the coming year.
And so this is where the process actually began, in December.
So in December, I send out the budget sheets to all the principals in all the schools who have to work on, to fill out, to send out to me what the budget goals and the budget needs are going to be for the next school year. And then, as Mr. Michael said, we've been meeting continually, week after week, not only with the administrative team, but with the board members that are finance. This long process, we start in December and end tonight. So it's something we're always working on, that budget book is always front and center on my desk. And that though is not as smooth as you see it there, it's full of potholes all along the way, as everybody that's worked on it knows.
And Mrs. Mulholland's not here tonight, or she'll be here in a little bit, she's running a little bit late, but this was her, I'm not gonna take credit for it.
No, we don't take credit for it.
But it looks real nice now, but getting there was a little bit, it really a challenge.
She's car going all over the place off road. So I start my budget by assuming state aid's gonna be stagnant. And the only amount we can go off is a 2% on our tax leviation fees. But this year, I started out thinking at about $782,000, $782,021. Twenty-one dollars, anyway. We had got a little bit extra in state aid this year, so everything kind of got all skewed, so next. So our tax, this is what our revenue breakdown is, our tax levy, our tuition, and then basically it's personal tuition. Other local sources, which include interest, pay to play, gate receipts, those kind of things. This is a fluid number. This year, we had to take $927,000 out of our fund downs and multiply it. That was the budget. Our state aid formula increased about $316,000, which was nice. This didn't go down. Extraordinary aid, which is also a fluid kind of number, that's based upon our special needs children, like the added district costs we have. It's a grant that I'm working on right now that is submitted by the end of May. And depending on how much money the state has at the end of the school year, I guess good funding or not so good funding, we'd be getting, we'd be getting about a million dollars a year. So budget 750 is considerable. And this year, we're withdrawing $1.6 million at our cap reserve to some of those projects we just talked about, the roofs, the technology, and other facility projects. So as I said, this year, our 2% cap on our tax levy was a little bit different. What usually happens is you take last year's, this past year's tax levy, they multiply it by 2%. But this year, the state got their little hands in it, and they took away some of that money via the Chapter 44 adjustment. Chapter 44, I don't know if anybody outside of my office would admit that, is the state assumes that because of the new health benefit program they put in place, that we're gonna save all this money in health benefit for years. So, yeah, look, thank you, laugh. Never happens, especially since we're not in the state health benefit plan, so it's never going to happen. So they have some bizarre formula that they put in place. And originally, that $203,000 was a negative, $1.2 million they were gonna take away. And I was just like, yeah, that's not happening. A couple letters later, a couple phone calls to Trenton, I got it down to $203,000, they were reducing from that number. But for some odd reason, they gave us an enrollment adjustment. The state determined that our enrollment's gonna go up for the next year. I don't know where, but you know what, if they want to give me more money, I'm happy, yeah. So between those two factors, our adjusted tax levy for this year's $39,000, 2% of that is $781,000. So I wasn't too far off on my original estimate of what my 2% cap levy would be. That's where we are right now. Now, being able to go up that dollar amount, I mean, we could go up that dollar amount. And we're already increasing our tax levy this year by $740,000. Additional $40,000 that we could have used is going into what's called the bank cap that I can use within the next three years if we need it, which we probably will. So our tax levy is only going to increase by 1.89% in the 23-24 school year. And just, I broke up, add the state aid for anybody that really wants to know. It's been prized for our district of only three categories plus the extraordinary aid, so it's sold $3.5 million. And also, Jody also did this beautiful graph for us outlining the distribution of revenues. As you can see, the tax levy is the bulk of our revenue in this district. And it's 87.1%, followed by only state aid at 5.3%. Now, most of suburban districts, the breakout of those percentages is not the same. Get to the urban areas, and it's completely switched around. They get the bulk of their money from state aid and very little from tax levy. So it's a good for that, you know, it is what it is, can't change. And this is our distribution of the expenditures. And as you can see, instruction is the biggest piece of the pie, it's a little over $12, $30,000. And I hate to say, it's followed kind of like by benefits, a $7 million. Benefits is not just health benefits, but it's also like tuition reimbursement, our workers comp, anything that has to do with the employees. That's another chunk change out of our budget that we really don't have much control over.
And this is where the challenge lies. So typically, every school year, the school budget looks and reads a certain way. But then what folks want to know, and it minimally so, is well, what's in it? What are you doing outside of just raising and increasing our taxes? So just so everybody has an understanding, these numbers here, I did some quick math. When we're looking at our operations, because we are a transportation district, along with our instruction, our special aid, our health benefits and administration, we put that together, that's $34 million, eight hundred and change. So that is a majority of a school budget, and there's no way around it. And that's what's different about this budget, because you will see in the incoming slides, there are some changes, okay, as far as state aid and programs.
So just so you, for people cause, kind of remains, basically remains the same from this current school year to next year. Which goes back to my initial slide, we really didn't cut any programs, any money out of the programs. One thing, just to continue on what Mr. Michael was saying, when we start this budget year process, I got all the principals' slides back or worksheets back, put them into my budget program. First time around, we were $1.1 million over what we could be. So that's where we started. So from there, and all the work, and I have to give, you know, a shout out to all the administrators that sat around that table all year, all winter, because it's because of them that we got it down to where we have it right now. They're the ones that looked through their budgets, combed through all their expenses, and said yea or nay to certain things. So a big shout out to them, because it's not easy to look at your budget and say, oh, no, I don't need those supplies, or I need that, or I don't need that. But they, you know, came to the table with their cuts and had worked that. So we got it down from being over $1.1 million, being, you know, balanced at the end. And here you go, the funny slide. Our general tax levy, as I said, is going up $740,000, or 1.89%, which is lower than the cap limitation of 2% by about $44,000. Our tax levy associated with debt service is only going up $1,659. So that's not even really dropping the buck. Those two together increase the tax rate at 2.034 for an average house of $415,000 costing $135,000 a year. So that's where we stand.
Okay, so what is included in this budget? So you may or may not have heard, we had been talking about meeting the board in my office in the district about full day kindergarten. Historically, kindergarten has been a three-quarter day. So we looked inside our budget, we had discussions with stakeholders, and we pushed things forward. And starting next school year, you'll see a resolution on the public agenda which follows this meeting at seven o'clock for approval, full day kindergarten. That cost for the six three-quarter day kindergarten staff members and phys ed is $356,000. So what we had to do initially was find that money that's part of the budget, okay? And when you're moving down, and really, this is, I give a lot of credit to our board, because this stems from the interview process, which took place last June and July of '22. Our facilities are in great need of upgrades. That was something that has not been happening. And understanding, no different than our homes, how expensive it is to maintain, sustain, and upgrade. You can imagine that by four buildings plus five with the board office with Cisco. So we're being creative in finding measures and ways. And again, on the board agenda, Ms. Keen had mentioned it, we have a rod grant application. And that's for immediate roof replacement at Stony Brook. And that cost in a rod grant, just so everybody knows and those in public, we have to apply legally, and that's why we have that resolution. If we're successful, it's a 60-40 split. So the school district, us as taxpayers, responsible for 60%. The state supplies 40%. So on Stony Brook School, to give you an idea, I apologize for my glasses. Now, this is from our architect's quick math with soft costs, the combination for roof replacement A and B. We're looking at total cost is $2.2 million. That's just Stony Brook. But if we're successful in obtaining the grant, the cost would be 1.3, and the state would pick up $915,000. And that's what I'm talking about, and being creative and being aggressive and going after grants, it's our responsibility to do that. So it's not just about Stony Brook School, it's also about Keel School. So there's a section in Keel School that's very problematic, and the soft costs are about $812,000 estimated. But if we're successful in receiving the grant, we're looking at a $487,000 cost into the district. That's not too bad, okay, considering, all things considered. So we're, we're doing our due diligence. The security grant is out there in the state, and that's a half a million dollars each school district if successful. We'll know in October. Our administrative team are working hard right now, we have a three-week window. The cost to our district is $5,000 upfront for a grant writer who has a 97% success rate, and then $1,500 thereafter for three years. If we're successful, we can receive a half a million dollars. Now, what we assess our needs security-wise is roughly about $900. So again, to receive a half a million dollars offsets our cost here in our town and our community. So it's us who have to do the work, just to give you that idea. And for the technology infrastructure, you've been hearing me talk, and I'm tired of talking myself about it. Infrastructure needs to be upgraded. Ms. Keen talked about the E-rate. Mr. Genselli, who's here tonight, has done an excellent job in looking for bids and such, and going out and talking to vendors. We even, Mr. Barron, who lives in town as well, provided his services for free of charge as a consultant, the board approved for Safari Solutions. We're looking at roughly, I don't know, Mr. Genselli, $480,000?
Four eighty.
And that just includes PRM and the high school over this summer. So there is a lot, folks, there is a lot that we haven't done, and that's okay. But we're going to do it, year over year, and have to be creative, okay? But then when we're talking staff, and when Ms. Keen talked about $1.1 million, that's where, you know, it starts in my office, and it infiltrates throughout the district. So look at numbers, to look at our student population, to look at demographics, and where are we? And again, if you go back to this slide, that goes back to what I had said earlier, about the $34 million, right out, right out of the chute. Of a $48 million budget, 34 million is us, in health benefits, right, majority of. So what we're looking to do district-wide, and it's again on the public agenda which follows for approval, is reduce in force the director of special services, the 912 supervisor guidance, the elementary assistant principal. So everybody has a piece of this administratively and instructionally. And then when we're looking at our numbers, an elementary special education position, two middle school positions, one being science, one special ed, high school English, and high school world language. And just in case, I'll back up, because this is, this does have to be said in this meeting. The admin team agreed, we were still roughly $250,000 light after all that. And we agreed to use the last year of ARP money, which was provided by the state, to infuse it in the budget for our NJ Care Plus services. And they are clinician services, one located at the high school, and one KA, right? That's two folks that work under the umbrella of special services. But I have to tell you, soon as this budget is approved, we have to find that next year. So the choice was, do we riff, do we lose or abolish an additional position, or two positions, or position and a half? Or do we infuse those dollars? The team chose to infuse them, okay, that's fine, but this is what we're looking for. And so when you're looking at not only instructional, but then how does that look when we're talking about up here up top? Looks like this. And again, I'll talk about it in public shortly, but the administrative structure, this is what it looks like. And tonight, on the, on the public agenda, you'll see a revised supervisor of athletics job description. But aside from that, you'll see two new job descriptions. One as a supervisor of special projects, one supervisor of student services, K-12. Supervisor of special projects is a new position, but not new money. Because I believe, at least in my six months of being here and assessing both formally and informally on a daily basis, that we have folks in districts, somebody could step up and apply for that position. And whether it's one of our current admins, and I'm not talking about then replacing their position, or one of our teaching staff members who hold a cert. We're not replacing the position, but this is a definite need, with a fine focus on security, on infrastructure, on vendors, on health and wellbeing, working with our SACs in the high, with our SAC in the high school, working with guidance, being the HIB, anti-bully coordinator, AAO officer. I'm tying it all together, and it will be located in central office. This position, with our student population, we have about 1,600 students, and you've been there for a while. Of that, we have a 330 caseload special ed. With that 330 caseload, we have many players in our district. My version of the brother sister offices are special services and guidance under one umbrella. Because we do have multiple administrative assistants, we do have child study teams, you have a very, a Cadillac model here in Kinneland, folks. And I say that as a positive, but now we have to operate like a Cadillac, and maybe I'm old school when I say Cadillac, and not a Lamborghini or something else. Maybe it's the Italian in me, but we have to operate that way. We have multiple guidance counselors throughout our district, and I just referenced NJ Care Plus. This person, after tonight with this job description, will be responsible for that, and housed in central office, but on the superintendent, director of curriculum side, along with me. It has to be a triangle working together. Special services, mental health, curriculum and instruction, my office with our supervisors, into our buildings. And that's how this looks. And that's where we're going. That's part of this riff. And, you know, I won't, like in any other meeting, I won't lie and make it easy. Sustainability is not simple. Cost goes up, it doesn't go down. Our numbers are our numbers, and for our admin team, they've heard me say this a thousand times. We have to be very cautious going forward on how we spend our money, on the contracts we approve, on the function of offices. Because I believe that everybody could be doing more. And that's just a philosophy I have. And I don't know if that was because I'm from the era as a superintendent of being frozen for six years of my life? Never having an increment or a raise for six years, and running two school districts simultaneously? I don't know. All I do know is that I'm here and I'm hired to do a job, and everybody could give a little bit more and dive in. So that's what we're doing. So six months in from the day I started, which was yesterday on the 24th of October, to now, here we are. Twelve months from now, it'll look different again. But I promise you, for facilities to security, to infrastructure and technology, and the way we maximize and use, daily use of our personnel will change, starting July 1st. And that's all impaled in here. So it's really, it's not, that's for later. It's not, it's not really as simple as it seems, but it's not impossible. So it's just a different shift of philosophy. And I hope I didn't bore anybody. I mean, I think we're willing to answer any questions, I don't know if there's anything out in virtual? Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. Just maybe.
Huge proportion of industrial arts, there's been some embrace with that. Obviously, anybody around my age point who remembers going to school and having a full barometer of parts, between telecommunications, printing, photographing, mechanical, woodworking, small engines, those type of things. It's something that I think that a lot of our school districts, understandably, becomes a budgetary issue. It got pulled off in the county, but now the county's to the point where it's grade point average to actually accept them. Me personally, I just, being in a trades mindset and understanding the importance of it, it's something that I think our, all of our local school districts need to try to figure out how to incorporate as much as they can. Is there anything we've gotten there that we're moving forward in Kinneland to really bring back our industrial arts?
We don't have anything specific, and I think we're the same age, so I completely understand what you're saying. And I know every time a plumber leaves my house, I want to cry. But I will tell you, it's oddly enough, Ms. Kane here from the high school, and I'm bringing a blank. Mrs. Joyce, right, they run the transition program here in the high school. And actually, yesterday, we talked about this very thing, about job coaching, about looking at flex schedules for students, about, you know, certifications and all those good things. So that's definitely on my radar. Because college isn't meant for every student. And sometimes AP scores look real good in Trenton, but what about dual-credit enrollment? Which we don't have quite a bit of, or offer, which you see on tonight's agenda, there's two mathematics classes for William Patterson University. So it's about making things a little bit simpler and more attainable for not only our parents, but our students, financially, academically, or otherwise, so. But I don't disagree with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes?
What security upgrades are you considering?
Everything. And you know what, since you asked that question, I'm sorry, forgot your last name again?
Campaign resilience.
Yes, okay, so let me go here. I intend to present this in public tonight, yeah, under my report. But since you asked the question, and we're here, and we have 25 minutes, why don't I talk about it a little bit now? So maybe if anybody wants to stay for the public, or you want to take a break, you could take a break when I get back up. This past February, we had, well, let me back that up. In January, Morris County prosecutors and local and school districts had a meeting. Mr. Shippus, where was that, in Randolph? I was so afraid driving with you that I don't remember where we were. I was so afraid driving with you that I don't remember where we were. Where was that? Mar- Maristown? Yes, I, that driving. And my neck was not good in those days. So, um, we were there, we were listening, and, and then a few weeks later, Mr. Suda was good enough to call a meeting with, with Chief Napolitano, and we were here. And during that meeting, I started writing and scribbling, and Mr. Royal made fun of my, my writing. And when it was quiet, I put it down like this. For a security vision, a, a security vision for the future. Okay, because security is ongoing, and it's something that I did quite a bit in my last district and in my district before that. It's, um, it's a background that I have, and I believe it can never be too safe. Now, that doesn't mean put barbed wire on the, on the windows or brick up the doors, but it means what can we do as a community? What can we own aside from having class three officers and knowing Chief Napolitano and the staff are right here? What can we do? So what that means is all of this. So what do we need? I can tell you right now, we need to harden our schools. Inside, out. We need to definitely harden our schools. So what does that mean? 3M film, ollards in, in certain positions and areas, fencing in cer- certain spots throughout the district, additional vestibules. And I'm not talking full vestibules, I'm talking extra door wet because there's quite a bit of training that we have. Right, we go down the line, protect that book, bookcases, signage is a simple one. All tech response equipment, surveillance, protocol, process. Yes, the mental health programs. Intervention, security handbook for the board. You know, what's our process, what's our procedure, how are we implementing? And that's not something we can share with public, but it's for the board, right? Breakaway emergency locks, I could go right down the line. And that doesn't happen overnight. And I could tell you right now, you could walk into the board office free. It's a problem. I'm not gonna lie. So I'm here, we have to start somewhere. And all, it's not that simple because now we have to budget for it. So that's why we are going after the grand, Mr. Shivers is leading that charge. Um, because he has been, he was approved all these years as a school safety specialist per Trenton. But that will change when the new job descriptions approved. That position will handle all of that. Along with me and the board.
What do you think is the most important priority point of view? What do you think should be, we should work on first?
I really don't want to say that in public. But it's always on my mind. And, and look, there's, there's some times in life, things happen. But you start here when you're talking about what can we do? You have to start with right there. Then it moves down, what are our district services? So I talked about this earlier with the restructure. You're, you're, here in Kinnellon, people don't know what a privilege it is to be here, to work here, to live here. I've been in other districts. We don't have all that. Nor at the cost. I've said that a million times. So I'm not much interested in any kind of complaints. It's about how do we get it done? What is the solution? So we have multiple guidance counselors, we have a citizens' abuse, we have child study teams in every building. We have Care Plus. There's no reason why from our end, anything should ever slip. It's on us, protocol, process, procedure and training. And again, I, I come with a little bit of a different mindset. So from us on the outside, here we are. We have the board, myself, that new position, which is just a move over from somebody who's here. We just don't know who that person is. And then it's into our community. When we're talking reunification, and again, next, next school year, I, I do, I will be, um, bringing back to like the citizens advisory, but unlike in the past, I'm opening it to everybody in the community. If you want to be part of it, come on and be part of it. Nobody's going to pretend to be the smartest person in the room. But we will have security forums, we will engage our community, we will practice drills, we will take them serious, and we will reinforce our buildings. Everybody has that understanding. Because we do live at a time where weapons are accessible. We all know that. And I am a gun owner. So it's not that I'm one of these superintendents that's not, oh, I am. But bad things happen with people sometimes with intent. And then when we look here for reunification, this was something that Chief was very large on, and I don't blame him. What do we have in district? Well, right now, we have six large buses. We have three small buses, but we only have three staff members during the day that are here to drive. Now, we could partner with the DPW, but in a crisis, who knows who is where? So actually, that too was something that I have it on here where it says, can we train more staff? Where Mrs. Joyce yesterday and Ms. Kane had actually talked about going out for their C D L training, you know? And that would be something, that would be a board decision to, to train our staff, whether it be for job coaching or whatever that has to do with our students and/or, God forbid, in a crisis, relooking. And I can tell you that Mrs. Donaldson, and I, I hope she's happy with me after I say this, we are looking into in the future because we're paying a very costly percentage to Jordan Transportation and for a student at a slow roll, what, what is the cost benefit for us to own our own buses? So we have our own cameras, we hire our own drivers, we own it, we have our own mechanic, maybe we could partner with the township on some initiatives. And we own it as our community. So that is something that's on the brink of change, just not yet today. I know that was a lot, but you asked the question? Here it is. You know, and of course, you could always look at security personnel. We have three class threes, but what else? Is there anything else we need to do? Do we have any points in our, our buildings? We're going to find that out. Does that help you?
It helps a lot actually because, you know, you hear everything in the news and you, you know, I'm not involved in the school district anymore, my kids have left a long time ago. But it's more of a concern now than it ever has been. And you, you worry about the kids and, and the staff as well. So thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. And you're welcome to join the advisory committee when it reacts. Tell your friends.
I do have another question.
Shoot.
Has nothing to do with security though. Um, my son is a coder, and he, um, has been doing online gaming coding for, for over a decade. And now that artificial intelligence has become the thing in, in education as well as in the workplace, he's telling me that his job or many of these coding jobs will be obsolete in 10 years. Um, they'll have a coder that will be directing the AI. But a lot of the, um, jobs that we expect right now will be non-existent in his opinion. Um, what is this school doing? I mean, this is clearly new. He says it's almost as if when the internet came out, the changes that will be appearing in jobs will be just as significant as what happened when the internet came out. What are you doing as a board planning for that eventual change, or is this premature, is the question?
It's slightly premature, but we, we anticipate, when I say we, I mean, school districts and, and those of us who are employed by them, that, that there will be some change in the future, like anything else. Whether we agree with it or not is a different conversation. Again, I'm a little old school. But, um, once, once we know when the state, and sometimes the state puts out initiatives that are ridiculous, sometimes they don't, but whatever that is, we'll deal with it at that time and have to adjust. And luckily, I mean, if you want to look at some positive, we do have a pretty big budget, large budget for 1,600 students. You know, you don't have to do much other than look online and do a comparative analysis of our total budget and what the board hopefully will approve tonight at 48 million and change to 1,600 students to some other districts. So if we ever have to, you know, repurpose staff or reutilize, I like hiring staff with dual certifications. Now you're multifaceted. Your numbers go up, slide, somebody here, maybe they go down, you go over here. What kind of certifications do you have or not? And then you, you don't have to lose people, and yet you don't have to start new programs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
I saw the protected bookcases on there.
Yes.
So is, are you wearing them?
Protected bookcases, yes.
Oh, bookcases, right.
Yes.
Oh, bookcases, not the book bags.
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to know the history on that?
No, I just, I saw the book bags, I've never seen the book.
Oh, okay, alright.
So those are ones where it's like a pretend wall, everything that comes out or, you know, that's.
I, I had the, I had the good pleasure last, no, it was in 21, late 21, to attend a professional development with two retired Army Rangers who, um, were serving in Afghanistan when the Virginia Tech shooting took place. And they couldn't, and they were two Army Rangers in Afghanistan that, um, let's just say, had to, um, conduct missions. And they couldn't understand how somebody was able to roam free at Virginia Tech for the amount of time they did. So when they came home after they gave all their service and did what they did, which I couldn't even imagine, um, they came up with an idea from the inside out. So what they actually taught me quite a bit, because they did visit my last school district, they visited all my schools, which were four similar here, just a little bit bigger. Um, and they changed my whole mindset. It's actual bookcases. And they're not cheap. But in a crisis, should it ever happen, nothing is coming through. And I, I, because it's security, I want to end that conversation right there. Um, but yeah, I, I think.
I'll go on, I, I can look it up.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, you can. Yes. Anybody? Yes.
Good, thank our superintendent for your presentation and your enthusiasm. The former, former manager, financial guy, uh, when we do budgets, we always look at it as quality and productivity. So the idea of doing more, you know, uh, what metrics are you monitoring to make sure you get your quality points and productivity?
Are you talking personnel?
Uh, oh, those, uh, student performance, personnel, uh, cost per people.
Well, everything always boils down to evaluation and performance, and that's annual, building by building, staff member by staff member. But then when you're looking at what's your cost and what's your oversight, that's where part of, once we realize where we were with 1.1, as Ms. Kane had said, here is what are those experiences and what can you do? Now, obviously, we have to have someone in the special services department. But again, it goes back to the numbers and productivity and, and how we are, what are some goals of the board? And what are some expectations of my office and of one of our building principals? At a district placement, that's a great cost to the school district, and we're talking special needs. And I was a special needs teacher, so I know all about it. We're talking instruction, test scores and achievement. And then when you're talking electives, mainly at the high, a little bit at the middle school, but more at the high school. Okay, well, what's that production level? Because I am, I, I will tell you as a former high school principal, for those who teach electives, they're great. You're not teaching in the core. It's not math, it's not science, it's not language arts, it's not history. I liked history and language arts, that was just me. But I will tell the elective teachers, you have to do something to maintain your programs from this moment on because we can't house and have the cost that we see. Here? Can't have, can't, we can't continue to sustain that and run courses with four or five students all across the board. So if you're asking me, that's the simplest but most effective way. Have to up your enrollment, and that might mean a balancing schedule as we go down the line. It's great to offer a million things, but you heard it in the back about the industrial arts. There's a need. And we also know what it costs for college if you don't have a scholarship. So what about those students who maybe don't aspire to take all those AP classes or take certain electives with three other students in it? Maybe there's some other benefit to, to what we can offer. Does that?
It's good enough.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, listen, thank you. Happy everybody came. Uh, you're welcome to stay. We have about 12 minutes before then we open our regular public. Um, if not, have a good night and, uh, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're just hearing adoption to resolve the school board administration's final budget for 2023, 2024 school year follows. The numbers are indicated in the agenda, I'm not going to give all the figures, we just saw them all in the presentation. As Ms. Keenan said, there's an adjustment for enrollment from the state, they're anticipating our enrollment will go up, so they're giving us some more money, and we'll happily take that. We have a maximum travel, so we're, please be resolved that our budget will include the maximum travel expenditure for reimbursement to staff for $43,355,000 for this school year. We have travel-related expense reimbursements. This is all according with the New Jersey Administrative Code that requires board members to receive approval for these expenses by majority of board members' membership. We will allow the school a threshold of $150 per staff member, where the board will not approve, there's no requirement for us to approve that individually. There are some travel that may come up that's not actually in compliance with the actual code, but be necessary, again, that will be approved at board meetings when it comes up to us. So therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves all travel, not in compliance, but necessary and unavoidable. Be further resolved that the board include in the budget expenses in accordance with maximum, again, expenditure of $43,355,000 for travel for board and staff. The VA's office and the board secretary shall track and report these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded. For special services, we'll go ahead and approve, as indicated in the agenda, a maximum amount of legal of $110,000 for our audit, $41,000 physician, $24,000 therapist, $830,000. And we will be withdrawing from the capital reserve account, we'll draw $1,604,731, as also previously briefed in the slide presentation, for technology, security, transportation, other maintenance equipment and infrastructure projects. And please also be resolved that the school board administration will track and report these costs. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion, any further discussion from the board?
Sure.
Nope. Okay. Ms. Keenan, from the board. Mr. Eisenbinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Gordman?
Yes.
Mr. Petruselli?
Yes.
Mrs. Douglas?
Yes.
Okay, we've had a public comment, is there any other public comment? So we're closing the public comment on the board process, and we wish to adjourn to the third, sorry, the public hearing conference.
I make that.
And I think, all right, this part of the meeting is adjourned. We will be in a team.
...discussed and acted upon in accordance with the provision of the Act. The Kinnon Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, which was published in the Supreme Court on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, posted in the Kinnon Public Library, filed with the Borough Clerk, and posted on the district website. Ms. Keane, you report for... Mr. Petroselli?
Here.
Mr. Gordman?
She's here.
Is that my... Mrs. Corolla?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mrs. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Uh, we're not having a closed session today. Uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considering all that which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, routine matters, approval of minutes. We have the, uh, several, uh, special public meetings, executive session, tentative budget meeting, executive session meeting, and the regular meeting for all of those meetings that we had in March.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm good.
Nope. Okay. Great. So you've got Ms. Keane for the board. Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah.
Mrs. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Petroselli?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
And then the...
Yes.
Christina?
So, starting off with KEEL, on April sixth, all KEEL students attended the Wacky Science Show Assembly sponsored by Keisha. I wanted to thank them for bringing such a great step-based program to our school. KEEL students were excited to participate in the Morris County Poison Control Poison Provincial Poster Contest, so congratulations to all those participating and those who received special recognition. In anticipation for our annual Field Day on June fifth, we are currently running our Field Day T-shirt fundraiser through April twenty-eighth, and all proceeds from sale will be held in the benefit of KEEL's Physical Education Department and programming for students. The KEEL kindergarten classes are collecting cans the week of May first as part of an ongoing math lesson, and all cans will be donated to the Kinnon Food Pantry. KEEL will observe the coronation of King Charles III and Queen Camilla of the United Kingdom on Friday, May fifth. This will serve as a school-wide social studies lesson where students and staff are invited to dress their best to commemorate the day. The next KEEL Stony Brook K-35 Forum will be held with families on the evening of Tuesday, May ninth. We look forward to discussing school-specific plans for the next school year. Speaking of the next year, we are also excited to host Warm-Up Day for incoming kindergarten students the afternoon of May ninth. We will hold our annual KEEL School Art Show on Monday, May twenty-second after four P.M. in order to see all the student artwork on display in KEEL School, and will also be a special book fair displayed set up for families in the yard. Stony Brook, we are pleased to announce that Julie Sun, Emma McCo, John Eisenmenger, and John Eisenmenger have been selected to participate in the New Jersey School Music Association Fifth Grade Honors Band Festival. We also had Anushka Madapurkar, Luca Patrowska, Landon Pisarilio, and Alexander Frank chosen as alternates. They will be playing on Monday, May sixth at Mount Olive High School. We are pleased to announce that the fifth grader Alexa Franklin placed second in the Speeches on Edge contest, and Stony Brook closed their Penny for Patients fundraising drive by raising four thousand and one hundred and twenty dollars. Our goal students participated in a field trip on to Facing Lakes on April twenty-first, where they looked for background vertebrae, tested water samples, and collected data for their goal. They will be comparing this data to the data they they collect back in fall. Mrs. Catalano's fourth grade class has been pen pals with Cedar Press Retired Educators Club, and on April nineteenth, they visited Cedar Press, where they were able to meet their pen pals and participated in a variety of activities. On Friday, April twenty-first, was Wear Red Day in support of Autism Acceptance Month. Thank you to all who participated. Our third grade students will be visiting Waterloo Waterloo Village on April twenty-sixth, and the NJSLA testing will begin at Stony Brook on May first, with our third grade students testing the first week of May. Our fourth grade students will be testing following week, and the fifth grade students the week after that. At PRM, the PRM Science Research Fair, which students in the Science A research course presented the projects that they have presented and worked on throughout the year, was held on Friday, April twenty-first. Second PRM Principals Forum will be held on the evening of Thursday, April twenty-seventh, and we will discuss new initiatives in a speaking place at PRM. Meeting will be held in person and online, and a recording will be available afterward. The seventh and eighth grade spring dance will be held on Friday, April twenty-eighth, and, um, we are proud to present the project for vinyl music, Bring Broadway Back to PRM, our school musical review on Friday, May fifth at seven P.M. And on Saturday, May sixth at twelve P.M. in the KHS auditorium, tickets will be on sale outdoor. Finally, at KHS, we are pleased to announce that Cole Pryor has been selected as a New Jersey Governor's School Scholar for the fortieth Governor's School of New Jersey Program in the Sciences to be held at Tru University this summer. As Governor's School Scholar, he will be one of the group, one of a group of outstanding high school juniors from all parts of the state, but then chosen over participate in this comprehensive and intensive three-week-long program. On April twenty-eighth, so this Friday, seniors will celebrate their post-secondary plans by wearing apparel to school from their college, military branch, place of work, et cetera. This one's about me. A journalism three student named Nicole Conical, editor-in-chief, Christina Havlin won a submissions contest and had her article about the Kinnon food, local food pantry published in the New York Post. At the Kinnon High School Allied Health Academy White Coat and White Coat and Pinning Ceremony, Natalie Hoffman, Amelie Phillip, and Kayla Bassett each received a pin affirming their commitment to the healthcare profession. Lastly, the Student Council hosted a three-v-three basketball games during lunch for the last couple of weeks. These games had a great turnout of players and spectators. The tournament, the tournament culminated at a schools' assembly with a final championship team playing the staff team. Uh, the staff did beat the students eleven to two, but through this event, the Student Council raised money for the New Jersey Association of Student Council State Charity Imagine and Fashion Aid Kings, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Today, I feel like I'm a little winded from the last meeting.
Sorry, I'm gonna...
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you, Mrs. President, and welcome, everyone. Thank you, Christina, you had a great report. Um, I just want to start, as we have quite a few items for the update under my report with the gift-back day. Mother Nature was nice, and so on the board's agenda tonight, we'll approve, and then I'll put out a reminder to all parents and staff. I, I promise I won't be overbearing when I do it. Uh, that Friday, May twenty-sixth, or the Friday before Memorial Day, the district will be closed for all, for all. That's part of our gift-back, so that's this coming Fri-, uh, next month's Friday. KEEL Stony Brook School Principal Forum, so, um, you may have noticed and recognized on tonight's agenda for approval is full-day kindergarten, and that means quite a bit. It means a plan of action, it means much coordination between the district and all of our employees. So, uh, May ninth at Stony Brook School, we will do a joint, uh, principal forum between Stony Brook and KEEL. I will also be in attendance, uh, and there we will discuss full-day, what it looks like, our pre-K program and speech moving over to Cisco to the top floor, uh, what the timeline and the process is for the remainder of May and June, because we do have to, uh, start to move quite a bit and prepare, and then after-school programs. So I just want everybody in our community to be aware that we have a plan, and it will come into play, and it will be presented on May ninth between our both, uh, both of our building principals. But I'm very excited for our community in moving to a full-day program, which is also part of our budget. Um, at the same time, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Thomas as our new, and she's in the back with Mr. Thomas and her children, her family here tonight, as our new Director of... I have to tell you, it was not a, a walk in the park for any of our, um, candidates that applied. In the end, uh, I also want to thank the Education Committee, who, it's Mrs. Donaldson, Mrs. Perrell's the Chair, and Mrs. Leonard, who all have their own children and families and homes and husbands and lives that gave up six hours of their life last Monday night in the final round interview process. You know, for our community, and I'm a member as well, you selected the right people to do the job, because it was part of... And Mrs. Thomas, we welcome you, we welcome your family. Uh, I look forward to what you're gonna bring. I need a little bit of help. So, and I look forward to that come July first. And, um, you know, not sitting too long. On May eleventh, Mrs. Thomas will be presenting her vision and her function as part of that last final round to our community livestream at, uh, at the high school for the Curriculum Focus Group meeting. So that'll be the final one of this school year, and there you get to know Mrs. Thomas, her introduction, her background, and really the goals and objectives she has to attain in this position, and I'm fully confident in her ability to work with our admin team and move things forward in the board. So, welcome, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you very much.
Um, teacher on assignment recognition now. In a few minutes, I'll, I'll stand back up and show you the administrative restructure, um, presentation from the budget. But teacher on assignment, that I want everybody to know, uh, from our community within and without, that that is not a new position for money. It's not a stipend. It was a job description that I created many moons ago, like in two thousand eight in East Rutherford. And it's, uh, for a teacher who's still in the unit that aspires to be an administrator, that strives to do more, to actually learn the job, because they don't teach you this in college. And, um, we were fortunate enough to have six folks district-wide to apply, and I really looked at it since it's a first-year program and non-tenderable, it was more about a conversation. Four of our six staff members up for approval tonight hold a principal cert. So, in absence of a principal, or say in the middle school with Mr. Mongan and Mr. Huser, to high school with, um, Mr. Suda and Mr. Shivas, should they not be available, that person could, can take charge for that moment in time. They will be trained in HIV, they will be trained on all security personnel, um, nothing, nothing as far as personnel and evaluations, none of that, because they're in the same bargaining unit. And, uh, for, for the folks in the unit, in the group that have supervisory certification, they could also learn the other angles of, of their position. They won't be able to run a building or man a building, but I'm always looking for leaders, and that was something that I shared initially in the interview process. And, um, you know, I'm not a Twitterverse person, but I, I will share that in two previous districts, two folks that were teachers on assignment, that worked with me and for me and with the board and the community, one is a Director of Special Services today, and one is an athletic director. So there's something to be said about folks that just want to lead and have an opportunity. And then if opportunities happen here or somewhere else, I'd be more than happy to help that person go somewhere else, right? If you're the best candidate in Kinnon, if we're Kinnon, if that opportunity arises, you get the job, just like Mrs. Thomas did. So, uh, Mrs. Todros, I see you here, Mrs. Jexo, I see you here, you're two of the six. So thank you very much for throwing your hat in the ring. I promise you, it won't be too painful. But you'll learn a lot, you'll see the other side of the, uh, of, of the tree, so to speak. Okay? And, um, so with that, I want, I want to call you up here, Mrs. Jexo, and your, your partner, Mrs. Van Deese, just for a few moments. Um, just as a background, we've been doing a lot of work. When I say "we," I say my office, Mr. Mongan, uh, the Education Committee with the members of the ELA team in the middle school, and, uh, I'm gonna, I'm not stealing your thunder, just the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody, Department of Education, Mr. Mango, administrators and community members. Educators in the Language Arts Department of Pearl Miller are thrilled to report that we've taken important steps towards reinstating and revamping our eighth-grade advanced, uh, Language Arts class. After meeting with building administrators and, uh, administrators and Mr. Mango, Mr. Mango organized a time for us to meet with the Education Committee, where we had an opportunity to discuss our vision for the future of the Language Arts program. We've since developed the placement test, and with the help of our building principal, developed the placement criteria, which will enhance the culture of academic excellence at PRM. Subject matter experts will be working over the summer to create an exciting and challenging curriculum for the students who qualify for this next year's class.
Yes, we believe this program will promote the intrinsic motivation of our students and confident that those with an affinity for language arts will be excited about this opportunity. Some have already expressed an interest in a class like this, but we haven't been able to yet. So we thank you for your time and attention and support, and we really are excited to share the news about the eighth-grade advanced Language Arts program with the PRM students. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think everybody I could speak to, the board is very excited, Mrs. Jexo, Mrs. Van Deese and company, because in the beginning, it wasn't just the two of you, um, for these changes, so thank you for doing that for our community and our students. And, uh, Mr. Doty, I'd like to call you up real quick for a bleacher report, no pun intended, and, uh, your announcement for the forum.
Good evening, everybody. Um, probably the biggest question I've been asked the most over the last couple of months is when's the field gonna be done, when's everything gonna be in? So, as you can tell, Monday, we had delivery of all materials, and today they actually started putting some beams together. Um, so it's probably gonna be ballpark, three, four weeks. It's kind of what they're telling me, as long as the weather's good and everything holds up, and then we'll be in business. Um, so it's, it's really looking nice, it's really taking shape, um, it's gonna change a lot of what we have out there, um, and we're all excited about it. I know the kids are talking about it, and every day they're looking to see all the deliveries and what's going on. It was interesting yesterday, there was some really big trucks and some really big machinery taking the stuff off the trucks, but, um, we're getting there, so hopefully, I would say really safe side a month, we're probably done, um, and then we're ready to go with that. So, graduation is safe, I believe, so, for everybody. Um, second thing is, as I told Mr. Mango, and I think the board's aware, we're gonna try to get the West Point parachute team to come back. Well, back, not back, they didn't make it here last year, um, so they pulled the plug on us last year to have an actual jump into the game, um, which is really, really cool. Um, right now, we're scheduled for Thursday, September fourteenth. Uh, we're playing a Thursday that week, Rosh Hashanah is that weekend, so we're playing our football game on Thursday night, out of respect of the holiday, uh, for that week. Um, and right now, all systems are go, which is what happened last year, until somebody at the point decided to change the schedule at last minute, but it's a Thursday night, I don't think there's too much else going on on a Thursday night, so I'm thinking that West Point's gonna be a good shaping place with that. Um, so we're really looking forward to that. It's, I've been a part of it before, um, and it's a really, really cool event, um, so looking forward to that, to help kick off the beginning of next school year. Mr. Mango, anything else you need me to?
No, that, that's, so long as we have the bleachers up by graduation. Hey, if I gotta get a ribbon, count it early, I'll get up there and do it, then we'll take care of it, right? Thank you, Mr. Doty. Okay, so, yeah, I have two things on, under my report, and again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, because for a lot of our folks here, um, may have heard this already. So, um, so I apologize, I'll, I'll try not to be long-winded, but on tonight's agenda, and it's not a secret, we had an administrative riff along with an instructional riff, and I know that's the first time in Kinnon that's happened since the former Governor Christie's cuts in two thousand ten, so thirteen years is a long time. Um, but where I've come from, I was actually accustomed to it, because you have to be able to sustain programs, and it's just, what is every job worth? What is the max cap? All those good things, right? Nobody wants to come in and lose staff, especially somebody who actually lives in town. Six months in, first budget, you have to lose people, but sometimes that's, that's the position I hold. So, round and round, the admin team went, and we looked at positions district-wide, and you saw that riff earlier in the budget presentation, instructional, but this is more about administrative. And then, so falling back, um, past experiences and looking at areas and focus of need based on student population, right, staff population and numbers, we came up with three positions, administrative. As Director of Special Services, nine, twelve, guidance, and elementary assistant principal. Those are the three positions up for approval tonight to be riffed and abolished. So then the question becomes, oh, what do you do? You know? So in that, tonight, you'll see three job descriptions up for approval. The first is Mr. Doty's in athletics, where it's not a change in the job description per se, that's, that's anything gravity-wise, other than reporting to my office, removing discipline, and actually giving a more focused load, community-based athletics along with school-based athletics and responsibility. So it kind of moves the smoke and the storm between his office and mine. That's just a revision. Two new ones are here, Supervisor of Special Projects and Supervisor of Student Services K-12. Supervisor of Special Projects will have a focused look, and I'll get to the next slide in a moment, on security, which, in my opinion, just my opinion, has not been looked at in quite some time. Chief knows what he's doing. I'm talking about school district responsibility, and a school district can't always just depend upon the Chief of Police and his staff, although fantastic. What can we do to be better? And I've asked Chief to fully assess us and let me know, because I like constructive criticism, because I want to know how we can do better with stress tests and anything else. So that office will be housed in, in the central office, it's not new money. It's somebody, once it's advertised, who currently in district, who holds a certification that aspires to want to do it, and I will not replace the position which they leave. So whether it's an admin on, on our team that wants the slide, or whether it's a staff member out there and it says, you know, I just want to give this a shot, okay? But it will be a focused look and approach on security, on HIV, on our mental health programs, collaboration with our school assistance counselor, our everything, everything in the middle. And then, of course, all the ride grants we talked about, all the projects we talked about, all the infrastructure, I'm leaning in towards Mr. Janiselli up front, technology-wise, we have a heavy lift, folks. And again, when we look at our student population, sixteen hundred students, we have a lot of staff. I believe it's time to pivot. Not to spend more, to pivot and maybe spend just a little bit less and expect more. It's okay to raise that expectation, which leads me here. Supervisor of Student Services K-12. We have a Cadillac model with our child study teams. We have a full child study team in every building in this district. We have five hundred and forty students in this very school, you have three guidance counselors plus a SAC, Student Assistance Counselor, full-time, plus an NJCarePlus employee, full-time. That's a lot for five hundred and forty. That's five, right there. Then we break it down into the middle school, you go two, or maybe it's two, it's two positions broken up by three. NJCarePlus floats, then you have your guidance in each of your elementars, plus your child study teams. I think when you tie that into our security and our mental health programs and actually checking boxes, I know I'm stealing that phrase from the end committee, but checking the box when we want to assure what we're doing, how we're doing it, what programs, we're moving three classrooms out of Stony Brook School, right? We have space now. Maybe it's time we salute, we bring in some special ed programs to Stony Brook if we could, and maybe with existing staff, I don't know. But we will leave no rock unturned. I believe this office, assuming that the board passes the job description tonight and approves it, will be advertised tomorrow. We will have somebody in district for this position approval at the June, June thirteenth, is that it? June thirteenth meeting? June eleventh? Whichever our June meeting is, we will have a candidate up for choice that night in approval. I don't know who that candidate is, I have nobody, no flames in the fire for this one. So it's wide open, anybody out in the universe there, wide open, apply, as soon as you see it tomorrow, if you think you can do the job, it will be advertised. But that person will be in central office with myself and now Mrs. Thomas, once formally approved and official, and we will work in a triangle on what's best for students, from our curriculum, from our course offerings, to our class size, all of it. It's all about to change. And just for the record, special education is my background, it's also Mrs. Thomas's background. So there's no misunderstanding when we're having conversations, whether that be with staff about placements, with child study team about placements, with principals about placements, or what's best for kids or not. It's gone. Don't talk to me about algebra when we're talking special ed, let's just talk special art. Algebra's not my wheelhouse, sorry, Mrs. Summitt, I had to zing you with that. So that's, that's where we are as far as the administrative restructure, but I want our community to know, and everybody who's here tonight to know, you'll be in good hands. Trust me, it's not the end of the world. Sometimes you can look to do more, and I say that as a former shared superintendent of three towns, two boards, two unions, multiple bargaining units, three mayors, two chiefs, one state police, I go on and on, eight years of my life. How much you think I saw my home? It's called work ethic. I have it. We're one town, sixteen hundred, I think we can do it. So, just give it a shot, that's all I ask. And then when we get to security, there is. And Chief, really, this, and I thank you for being here, I'm glad you're here. I started writing notes, and Mr. Royal made fun of me that day when we met in February, and this is what I was thinking. Okay, as a district, what can we do? How can we own it? So we have that security grant up for approval, which is on us, and hopefully, we'll know in October if we've achieved it and received it. And if we do, it's up to five hundred thousand dollars for five years, we have to do the work. Plus, we still have our own work to do aside, that's not covered in the grant or not part of that. So it's a year over year, but everything we do, what can we do? What are we missing from hardening our schools? 3M, blind spots, it goes on and on. Obviously, we have our class threes, we have close proximity, that works well, and Chief, your idea about these substations, fantastic, over in Stony Brook across town, makes everybody feel a little bit better. Um, what services can we attack from inside? Educationally, instructionally, programmatically with parents? Because next year, we're gonna have security forums, and I'm gonna have parents come out, and I'll be the first person to call someone out if they come to then a meeting, a public meeting, and ask questions, or maybe have a difference of opinion, but you didn't come to that meeting to actually talk about. So, the gloves will come off when it comes to security, we can't leave any rock unturned, it's us, together as a community. So we have to own that. And then here too, transportation, right? We talked about reunification. We only have three people here in district during the day. I would like us to do some drills next year. Of course, parents would know and staff would know in advance, but the only way to know is to do it, actually put it in real time, and then assess it and improve on, together. So, we have a lot of work to do, and this also falls in line in maybe looking at changing and moving away from first student in Jordan Transportation and owning our own transportation. And maybe we could work in partnership with the township and do inter-local agreements, I don't know, but it's worth the conversation. So, that's the vision, that's the plan, and I promise you, things will start to happen. Just need a little bit more time, we need to get through tonight, get into the summer, hopefully we achieve the grants, we start to move forward. So, I just wanted to share that and put it out there, because security is something that I think you can't just walk away from. And I take that very serious. So, with that, ends my portion, I'm done. Yeah, anybody has a question? I don't know, Mr. Janiselli, if anybody has a question out there? Um, no? Okay. And, uh, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Dave. I would just like to mention all the hard work that the administrators, uh, just, just kind of various community stakeholders have put into some of the stuff that's been going on, especially with the budget. I know there was a lot of work, we met, we've met very frequently as twelve board members, so, uh, I really appreciate the administrators and their effort in getting the budget done, but we just approved it about twelve minutes ago. Okay, going on to committee reports, I am the Chair of Finance and Facilities and Security. We did meet a lot, we approved, uh, four, one, five different, uh, minutes, uh, last month in March. Um, we talked about, uh, we're, uh, which you'll see on some of the, um, voting, we're going to raise the, we are recommending an inclusive preschool tuition raise, uh, we talked about, um, the extended school year, uh, due to the way that July is where holiday falls this year, uh, to twenty-three days instead of twenty-four, uh, and we'll add an hour on to the days that we have for the extended school year. Um, there was some discussion about, um, possibly doing some carpeting in the Cisco Building, but we're going to refrain from that and concentrate our money on educational services and staff. The, uh, Ms. Keane did excellent work with all the administrators on budget, that was approved earlier. We've got, we've had a lot of discussions in finance and facilities about the security vision, uh, and Mr. Shivas did a lot of work for us researching a security grant, so, um, we are recommending to the board the, to go ahead and have the grant raider pay him to rate it. It gives us a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent, so depending on how much we spend, um, we could get up to five hundred thousand dollars towards our security, so it's, uh, it's really worth the effort, and the raider has a ninety-seven percent, um, achievement in the districts that follow this guidance. Um, that needs to be done by the seventeenth of May, so there's, there's a lot of work to get that done in the next three weeks. We did, we did approve the rod grants, uh, submission, so those were signed and submitted last week, not yesterday, signed them yesterday. And then full-day kindergarten, um, the committee did a, a lot of work on this, this was a real initiative, when we were interviewing Superintendent, it was part of our interview question on how we would do this, um, it was a goal of the board, and, um, Deva has laid out a whole plan for how that's gonna go for maintenance and studio staff, and also for the staff, where they will, and that plan has been shared with the Education, the Finance Committee, and just the cost of that, which is really just being determined. So we are gonna have the facilities, so, it's gonna go. And you, uh, met with the Morris County rep, so...
Yes, very just.
That was yesterday, so, um, if, we've got the approval from the county to go ahead and make that motion. So that is the finance report. Kristina?
Uh, yes, so we also met the same night, uh, we talked about, uh, the progress on the administrative observation model, so we, we talked about that and the progress So we talked about that and the progress that the committee wants to do that, so that's gonna come along well. We talked about Mrs. Thomas, the new Director of Curriculum Instruction, so welcome again. We talked about our professionals in the 23, 24 school year. And we also spent some time on full-day kindergarten and the kind of personnel impacts there. So I think everything that's kind of been covered already in a lot of the presentations. I think that was us for personal.
Education. We met twice this month. The first night was to do the final rounds of the people that had to come in to interview for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So that was the first night. And luckily, we had a wonderful candidate that everybody was unanimous in hiring. The second time that we met was the next night on April 18th. We talked about some William Patterson dual enrollment courses that we're going to be implementing next year. There's a pre-calculus honors class, calculus honors class. We talked about the evaluation and instruction model that our administration and staff would like to move to for next year. There was a vote taken on that and it was, it was pretty overwhelming that the goal is to move away from what we currently have. And some of the teachers were able to go and look at, to see the model that they're interested in in other towns. We talked about how much that would cost to institute a new model. And we talked about how, you know, some cost-effective savings if we were to implement it sooner than later. We talked about the upcoming PRM SOR presentation. And we got just a layout of what that would look like. And we got to meet, you know, our speaker a little bit later, what she's gonna be saying. We talked about the gifted and talented program, replacement and some things going on there this year with personnel. We talked about the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment contract. And we talked about the three ELA honors program and, you know, the, the test that would be administered as soon as the NJ SLA testing is over. And we talked about the full-day kindergarten timeline, same as you had in other ones. Does he need anything? Joe?
I'll see. I'm gonna punch into the call.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Sure. Since we discussed three main, main items. The first was the, the file for the randomized drug policy, which is on the first page, I'm intending to make. We also spent some time looking at overviewing the controversial issue, issues policy. So nothing in concrete, just a discussion to see how that, that was all working. And we did get a strata policy alert, which is quite large, which we're working our way through now. So we'll have more on that next night, definitely something for you.
All right, delegates, take the chair.
New Jersey School Boards, the leadership conference is coming up on May 17th. For anybody who's, that is in-person, unlike the supposing, which was virtual. And then the registration for workshop, which is October 23rd, 26th opened earlier this month. Just so everybody is aware of that. And there's actually a new session that they added to this 17th, a new breakout session, which is, it just came out, I don't know if you saw the email, it's called "I'm not gonna trust tools for building productive relationships with fellow board members." So that's probably a good new breakout session.
That's on the 17th, that's.
That's on the 17th, that's one of the breakout sessions on the 17th, yes. And then something that just came out today from school boards was nominations for unsung superheroes in education. I don't know if you saw that, but it was an email that just came out today. So you can submit nominations by August 1st. And it celebrates invaluable contributions of school district staff in things like library media specialists, coaches, nurses, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria food services, crossing guards, secretary administrative assistants, and power professionals. So that's an unsung heroes war. So if you haven't seen that, you should have that email, you're in touch today.
Morris County Schools Association. Okay, so I'll be brief, in addition to what Mr. Country Sully messaged us now about the staff positions, we recognize for outstanding contributions, really just such as the principal school board member training. And additionally, there was some interesting information about Morris County and other districts as well outside the county receiving New Jersey recreational area improvements. Over 300 districts received money. Those included not just schools, but also municipalities. So something for me as a board member just to keep on glove and just to watch for, understanding of the opportunities for partnership and our responsibility to, to the finances and fiscal responsibility can be from both, so. But not too much, thank you.
Mike, is there a meeting next Thursday?
That one?
Oh, that, that one is, you know, I think for four, three.
Okay, Jonathan, much longer.
Yeah, trend is in the middle of budget season. Yesterday, we sent the budget to the board, presentations from the commission of education. Nothing big for us other than budget, we used to ask hours. But just to reiterate what Daniel just shared, you know, we, often it gets a bad rap because we all get this much money, but they're all, you know, there are often specific grants that are sitting there that we've now applied for several. You know, you don't get anything if you don't ask. And, you know, it behooves us to really stay on top of that, keep going, and work a little bit on this, so.
And Morris County Educational Services. So they had a meeting over Zoom and it took place over spring break, so I didn't attend it, I was away. But it looked very straightforward, this type of year meeting, we approved the budget for next, for this, for next year. The board secretary for treasure report, the school calendar, there was just stepping. It was a very straightforward meeting, so. Community relationships, can you, can you tell me about your meeting?
Your meeting, the first thing we can use was a group, but also we definitely had a request for agenda items out there.
K Care. There's K Care's meeting going on right now. And some of the members of K Care's meeting, they have relationships with the board members. And then K, you want?
Okay, sure.
Great. Now to petitions and hearings of citizens on agenda items. If anybody has anything they want to say right now, welcome to come up for agenda item.
And distinctly 457 Laurel A. First of all, I don't know what I'd trust as paramedic teacher. That's just me. So the one thing I wanted to talk about, talked about in the education committee, the dual credits with William Patterson. One of the things that this district doesn't have at our high school is a class beyond the parents. But we have students who need that class. Other districts around us do have that. So it seems to me if we're gonna do something, one of the colleges, rather than the onus beyond the parent, maybe the school can offer something that the kids can take. That's all. Thank you.
That is one thing about good math teachers.
Hey, Matt.
All right, so going on to agenda items, finance, facilities and security committee, excuse me. Agenda items 1 through 17 will be voted upon as approved. So one is treasurer's report for March. Two is the secretary's report for March 3, the budget transfers for March. Four, secretary certification budgetary line items. The board's certification budgetary line items. The bills list, as indicated in the agenda, which is A, B, C. Number seven is the teaching staff job expenses and support staff job expenses, which are attachments A for higher school facilities at the beginning. Accepting the emergency drill report, which is attachment B. Approved the participation in the national and state school lunch program for the 23, 24 school year. Approved the lunch pricing as indicated on the agenda for the 23, 24 school year. Approved the membership in the New Jersey State Interest Elastic Athletic Association for the 23, 24 school year. And then 12 is the resolution for the full-day kindergarten. Whereas superintendent has recommended offering a full-day program for kindergarten students and has, the Board of Education has tasked the administration to conduct the feasibility of it. It was determined there was considerable interest in academic and development benefits in expanding, expanding offering to a full-day program. We resolved that the Kinlaw Board of Education, upon the recommendation superintendent approves implementation, full-day kindergarten at Keel School to kindergarten students beginning with the start of the 23, 24 school year. Number 13 is to approve contract renewals for Jordan Transportation, this is in the agenda. Is to, 14 is to, I think, the preschool inclusion program, enrollment fee of 400 per month, 4,000 per year for the 23, 24 school year. The proposal for professional services for facilities assessments. This is the, our new architect is going to be doing an assessment of all four of our buildings to determine what needs to happen with facilities and then provide us with a list of priority so that we can revisit our long-range facility plan. And this is a $44,000 fee for the entire assessment. Let's see, and that's also an attachment, so if you read that, we'll propose it, it's about five persons, eight agents. 16 is the consultation contract for developing the security grant. And that's an attachment D, it'll cost us 5,000, with potential of getting a $1,000 rate. And 17 is the resolution to proceed with the facilities project consisting of the roof replacement for Stony Brook and replacement at Keel. Whereas the board now seeks to take initial steps in order to proceed with the project, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education will kittle on in the county board of state of New Jersey as follows. Section one, in accordance with section, the administrative code, or hereby approves a schematic analysis prepared in connection with the project. And the board further authorizes the submission of the same to Morris County Superintendent's School and the New Jersey Department of Education. Section two, the board authorizes the amendment to its long-range facilities plan to reflect these proposed projects. And section three, the school administration and such other officers and agents of the board as necessary, including board attorney, counsel, and architect, are hereby authorized to perform such acts and are necessary to implement the determinations the board set forth in this resolution, including the submission of information to the New Jersey Department of Education. And section four, this resolution shall take place, taking effect immediately. Second. Any discussion?
I have a couple things, sorry. Number 13 was for Jordan Transportation. It's first, first student I see in addition.
I would have been there, and shows not your new contracts next year, but CPI rating of 5.67%. So we had two options, we could go out to bid on our own. So I thought there was a contractor from Morris County Education Service Commission that go out for us for the contracts. We chose Morris County Education Commission for some of the different reasons. One being that first student, we also draw up the roof condition, grounds of the management, which happened to be tiered with R's. So we're just also going out with recognition. So hopefully, these two districts will be tiered with this together and get a better price. To do that separately, we've got the blue with S, so we chose that route instead. So we gave 4% fee to the commission to be doing that. And that's for the old quarters, two stations for the old quarters. As for everyone, but it had first student, I'm half the way to making it out this way. Once we're doing out the road, you're putting a free kid program.
And just ballpark, how much was the first student this year?
Seven, maybe six thousand.
Seven, maybe six.
So a budget for 6% increase, even as the CPI was going through. So it's gonna be able to build it for the master, I was working on taking our existing route that we have, see if we can buy one or two together and suspend the route next year for safety.
Sure. Right, thanks. I have another question, like, see if anybody else says. Question, it's on. Don't be a big guy. Just one other, one other question, and it's on the 44,000, that's for the assessment.
Great, great. So when we, when we interviewed, and we talked about how that, like, the high school's 11,000 each school. So that'll give us a list of what's the priority and what we have to do. So we can make a better, we'll have to change our budget choices. But I really wanted the data.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And they've already, we've already been pushing that, like, for, for that road grant.
Right, right, they wrote the road grants for us, they did carry, they got that done in Messiah. They submitted it in the next year. So that's hopefully gonna be meaningful for the rooms, but this is everything else too. HVAC, lighting, trailers. And then there's, there's money in there. Or bathrooms, I know a big one, I think their high school's got a huge bathroom. Staff, faculty rooms, there's just a bunch of stuff.
What do you hear about, about the road grants?
Deadlines, yeah, deadlines are the big first. Substitutes.
Can I ask a little clarification on that, actually regarding their exclusions for the assessment? It mentions testing and commissioning of MEPs, which by, I'll ask for clarification, by some sort of mechanical engineering. So is that, I don't know what the MEP are, mechanical engineering? Yeah. It's in, it's three of five of the letter from the, so I just wanted to ask for that clarification.
All right.
What do you?
Um, Jessica.
Oh, okay, that's good, that's good. That's a, he's pretty good.
I'm assuming that's what that is. Mechanical, electrical, and wood.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions about items 1 through 17? No? Okay. Um, so you. Sure. Mr. Isaacman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Brolo?
Yes.
Mr. Ordman?
Yes.
Mr. Rich Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Douglas?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel.
Okay, for the personnel negotiations, we need to know items number one, 17, representative personnel negotiation committee, recommendation, that is approved. Number one, our first section is resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, and the reduction in force. So number one, you'll see, so a couple resignations, retirements, and leaves of absence in the table that you see on the number one. Number two is a resolution for the reduction in force. So just as Mr. Mango explained, each of the positions is listed there, that's part of our reduction in force. Number three is new appointments for the 23, 24 school year, so that starts on page, so they use on page eight, that table. That's where the teacher on the sign pieces are. Dave was talking about. Oh, Director of Curriculum, is there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's at the top. Mrs. Thomas? You're still there, don't worry. That was number three. Number four, which is on page eight, is additional appointments, staff member appointments. Number nine is the approval of the personnel attachments. So you have A, B, C, and D on page eight, and then E, F, G, H, and I on page nine. So we're moving those personnel attachments. Number six is for training level changes and salary adjustments, that's attachment J. A lot of attachments, I guess you can still look at those. Transfer of the kindergarten program staff, number seven. Number eight is the studio maintenance, holiday schedule, that's Patrick K. Number nine is eighteen exam prep. And then you have personnel attachment L under number nine. Number 10 is payment to staff members based on the events that you see there on, number 10 is equal to number 10. Number 11 is approval of summer 2023 school council report. Number 12 is home instruction, approval of home instruction. Number 13 is the approval of substitutes, substitute appointments that you see listed in the table on number 13. And then 14, 15, and 16, or actually, 17, you have additional attachments that we're approving. So Stony Brook School is co-curricular, PRM co-curricular, the new job descriptions that Dave was talking about, so you can see those three listed on number 16. And then spring coaches. And then spring coaches and volunteers, that's the last attachment, number seventeen. So, but ask for a motion to approve this.
Okay, discussion. It's a lot. Been talking about it for a while.
Been talking about it for a while.
Have you had any other questions on anything? It is a lot. No, I don't have any question.
I just have a question with appointments. It has number one on page seven and then you go to number three. Just wanna be sure there's not number two that?
That's awesome, that's a good question, I'll answer that.
So then we have the six teachers on side, so we could catch that. So then it's just the number, it's not a person, we're just, yeah, so we could adjust to two or three, like, two, three, four, or five, six, seven.
There's something missing, we have to move the next meeting.
So we have six.
Yeah, we only have six teachers on side.
We only have six, we do. Mr. Rich Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Fordman?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Yes. Welcome to the Kinnalon. All right, education's due next week. Uh, ten items, one through seven, will be voted upon as a verdict. Number one is the comprehensive equity placement assurance for next school year. Number two is the New Jersey High School voter registration law annual statement of assurance. Number three is the experience extended school year. Number four are the field trips, you can see listed there. Number five is the William Patterson Dual Enrollment Program for the street health assistance and health care. Number six is the dual enrollment, um, just saying how much it will cost the students that are interested in taking it. Number seven is, um, the approval of the coding code. That will be started at PRM, that is an attachment.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Okay, sure. Just to follow up on number one, the comprehensive equity program, SLA, which is required by school districts per NJCUSAC, but the plan has not been revised in quite some time, but due to change in personnel and policies or ever-changing included, I, um, I hate to, to, um, give the directive for myself and the policy committee, but I think this summer it'd be a kind of heavy lift to, to go through it and make those adjustments. Some of them will be easy, some of them we may have to add, some we may have to decrease. We'll look at where we are tonight, but this is just a statement of choice.
We didn't file, we didn't have to do it during COVID.
I think they kept giving extensions.
Yeah, they kept doing extensions, so it's the first time I know I've ever seen that. It's more than a percent. So we did have some questions about.
And we, we are under CUSAC review next year.
Yes.
So that, that will be a very big lift.
Yeah. Which is a good thing, wasn't this year?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, one more thing, definitely didn't mean.
Sometimes, sometimes the good Lord's on your side.
Okay, um, let's keep moving forward. Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fordman?
Yes.
Mr. Rich Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Douglas?
Yes.
Okay, um, policy committee.
Uh, we have agenda items number one through four to vote on, um, we wanted to pull one thing back, I think.
Yeah.
You can, you want me to say?
Doesn't matter, it'll be I can.
Yeah, um, we wanted to, um.
First reading of number?
Yeah, KHS, first reading of H I, HIV, KHS number eleven, HIV number eleven, we just want to approve it.
Yep.
We'll look at it in committee.
Yep.
The next committee meeting, I mean, sixteen.
Yep.
And then also, just for the record, under the policy committee, up for second reading and adoption is regulation forty-four thirty-two sick, sick leave. And if the changes in there are, are very basic, where previously the district, staff members were permitted five days prior to having to show doctor's letters, now it's three after tonight wants to vote. And that's something that, you know, again, I know that's a cultural shift, but we have to be in work as much as possible. So beyond three days, we'll require doctors, no, or we do it for our students, we do it for our staff, that includes me. So, and also in that, um, change in revision, Mrs. Thomas, it was just approved, she will also be, um, moonlighting in the HR department. So if there are any issues or concerns of staff that are absent three days or more, that information will come from her office, which is confidential. So if there's something that we need to know, that's outstanding, that we can address it collaboratively. So I just wanted to put that out here, I want to thank the policy committee for assisting in that as well. And then the HIV, we're pulling the roll up.
Okay.
So, so forth, thanks. Sorry. So the first is, uh, second reading and adoption forms, uh, the regulation of associated policy on sick leave. Number two is first reading. Uh, has to do with the random drug testing policy, the five-five-three-zero-point-one. The third are the HIV reports for April twenty-twenty-three, you see two on for second reading. And that's third one is pulled back for the discussion of final, it's also up for, first reading tonight. Uh, and finally, the adjustments to the school calendar to note get back day, um, what more would they be?
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Fordman?
Yes.
Mr. Rich Sully?
Yes.
And Mrs. Douglas?
Yes.
Community pool, or something there, unfinished business, anybody who need unfinished here, please discuss.
For, for the education committee, we'll do the same format for the, um, the supervisor of student services, K-12, if that's okay with you? I hope it's not six hours long at this time. But I was thinking about maybe the, um, the day we return, or the second day we return after Memorial Day, if that works, that Tuesday, it was, you let me know. The, the fair of us, and Mrs. Thomas, when we have that date, I'll let you know, you can sit with us on that final round. Because the first round will start on the seventeenth and eighteenth, and that'll be our principals, our supervisors, Mrs. Thomas, Mrs. Sutton, and myself. That email will come out tomorrow. So we're, we're ready to roll.
So it's the thirtieth, Tuesday?
Okay, whatever works, the thirtieth, the thirty-first, whatever works for everybody's schedule.
All right. Okay, new business, um, we do have more training.
Maybe just give a recess.
Yeah. Okay, so motion recess.
Motion recess.
Move it to the end. Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, actually, okay, so, um.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. Uh, we're going to move the board ethics training to, um, after board member comment, before, after board member comments. Can I move motion into? No, I can see.
I can't, yeah.
So I'm okay with it. All right. So moving. Board training to after. All right, correspondence. Okay. Okay, petitions and hearings of citizens for non-agenda items, anybody who likes to look at the address of the board? Want to tell this one?
Does this, does teacher come?
Sure.
Of course.
For teachers.
So I'm not sure how people are aware, but, um, the staff was polled regarding interest for an opportunity to bring our own children to the district as, you know, non-residents. That would be a revision by policy to, um, policy five-one-one-one, and we shared, my colleague and I, really, she did a lot of the research here, this is Mrs. Cahill, to research policy five-one-one, one in other districts and surrounding areas, and we just sort of brought that to policy, and we understand how busy and, you know, a lot of things happening, a lot of clean parts, but we just wanted to kind of publicly state that, um, there was quite a lot of interest, and we're hoping that this could be offered, we'd really appreciate it, could, could be offered to staff members in, you know, the near future, September.
Hi. So most of you know who I am already, but for those who don't, I am Tina Sutton, president of our KPA. First, welcome, 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 Lauren Thomas. I had the pleasure of meeting her ahead of time, and, um, she worked really hard on that final presentation, um, and for her to be sitting on this agenda, she absolutely earned it. As I said to Mr. Mango, when he, uh, first sat in that same seat waiting to start his journey here, you are getting the most hardworking staff, dedicated staff, that will follow your vision, we are excited and ready for him to have help. Um, and, uh, we're just excited to, to complete this whole, this whole journey that we've shared together over the past year. As bittersweet as this is to Mrs. Mulholland, you are a breath of fresh air. And I know I speak on behalf of all of us, um, we, we treasure our moments together, I've enjoyed every conversation with you, um, I've had the ability to talk to you on all different levels of the, of the district, and we were so fortunate that you came at a time when we needed it most to transition us, when we lost our two higher leaders, and you stepped in and you made it happen for all of us. And, um, I, I know that we are wonderful transition as it is, but you bridged that, and it, we didn't skip a beat. We didn't skip a beat. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, and enjoy your retirement for the. And lastly, to the Board of Education, you are working so hard. You are giving so much time, and Mr. Mango, we see it, we feel it, we have a fifty-one page document to be approved tonight, probably the longest I've seen in a very long time. You, as a teacher, I wish my kids were younger and I would be bringing them to Kinnalon too. What an outstanding community, it's why we stay, it's why we don't want our, we want our kids here, the programs that are happening for all of us are outstanding. So on behalf of the entire association, thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do, and next year's gonna be just as great as this one. I was not sending this. Most of you know this is true. Mrs. Sutton, thank you, but truly, oh, Mrs. Winkle, I, I just, like, if we were in school, you would have a thing that I cut you. Come away. Um, but, but truly, I thank you for your kind words, however, I, I would like to express my gratitude, my incredible, um, gratitude that I feel towards this district, this board. Our goal is to provide our students with the best education possible, we do that, we're going to grow, the, the future is bright. While I thank you, this is not about me, this is about Mrs. Thomas, I'm so happy. If I heard Mr. Mango call me his chief second one more time. If I, right, if I go down, you're it, no. Mrs. Thomas? I know, I know, we joke, and, and it's been my pleasure. You welcomed me as a chief second, and I have so appreciated that, I have learned from you, I've grown, I am grateful for, for all of the work you do, and I'm looking forward to continuing, um, my relationship with the district with all of you. But Lauren Thomas, you blew me away from the moment you sat in that chair, and I said it, said it to, to the committee. Wow, this, this is, this is it, and you had to prove it, so, um, you, there was some stiff competition, and we knew that was a challenge, and you rose to the top, and this district is so lucky to have you, so I wish you all the best, and.
You wanted to stand up, just give me that.
Me stand up?
Yeah, just don't walk away, just, just come back.
Mrs. Winkle's me.
Need to respect the Mrs. Winkle.
Fair enough.
I just wanted to say.
Why?
Listen, if I go down now, it's okay.
Pardon me, let's, okay, I'm gonna say, I wanna do my Superman thing.
I called you twenty, or twenty-one, I told you don't retire, you didn't listen. Came on, I was happy to see that agenda eight months ago, right before I was approved, same night, right? So I always believe life is about time. And, um, then my mother saw it and said, Bruno's, we don't say goodbye, we just say, I'll see you. So I'm sure I'll see you again somewhere, sometime, you know you have a home here. Thank you.
Harry Winkle, parents, uh, Jody, thank you, because I think I called you two days before you started, to start harassing you. Only employers know I can do well. So thank you, I think you did about three years of work in three months, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to let you know that I was at a meeting the other day with a bunch of curriculum directors, and they were praising the policy that you made a few years ago on reviewing resources. So I just want to let you know that there's an entire county looking at Kinnalon as a model of how we review resources, and I was really proud about that, and wanted to make sure that we maintained that policy. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winkle.
Hello.
Hi.
Leslie Wayne. Um, to Mango, board members, colleagues, parents, um, I started in Kinnalon, uh, more than thirty pounds, I guess. But I had actually taught, uh, at a private school and a couple of other schools for maternity leaves, I did a lot of subbing, so when I came to Kinnalon, I chose Kinnalon, and fortunately, they chose me. I think early on, I was in sixth and seventh grade in Pearl Whaler, then I went to fifth grade, twenty-seven years, and then down to third grade, so I'm leaving before you put me in kindergarten. But lots of things have happened over the years, I remember, um, teaching on nine eleven, when they told us to remain calm and, and be a, a source of strength when the students didn't know what was happening. Remember starting the DARE program with Joe? I'm home Joe, you're home chief. And ending the program with you at the same year, that was wonderful, all our trips to Pete, and all the things that have taken place over the years, and I can say that this has been the best district for me to have in three years.
All right, board member comments, let you go, so then we'll take a sus support train. What's your first reading?
Mrs. Wayne, thank you so much for coming up, you taught to, uh, my boys, and I'm sure they were just dying to get to school first day, asking if you had a son named Bruce, that's the name of yours. But we do have a lot of retirements tonight, and we do have some amazing people that have dedicated themselves to our community and made it better. I believe that we have the best town, the best district, the, the best that we offer to our kids, but the reason that we have that is because of all the people in our schools every day that interface with our kids and make their days better, and increase the quality of their education, and make this be a wonderful place for their childhood, uh, to kind of prep them for the world to go out in and to make it a better place. So I just wanted to recognize the people that are being retired, it's Mrs. Wayne, Mrs. Paul, Mrs. Nagy, Ms. Gicken, and Mr. Muller. You know, it's, it's always an exciting thing when people retire from this town, and we thank you for your dedication. I wanted to welcome Mrs. Thomas, it's so, very exciting to have you on the board, um, and thank you so much for just the enthusiasm that you brought, um, and we are just all so excited for you to begin, um, and do wonders with this town, so thank you. I wanted to thank. Um, I wanted to thank all the administration and Mr. Mango for all the work that you did on, um, everything that was presented tonight. Because I, I do know it was a lot of meetings and I do know that everybody worked hard for that. And everybody shares a vision of making our town the best town in the country, so I do want to thank you, um, for that. And I know that the kids have standardized testing coming up, so I know that's always a tricky time for the kids and for us. So I hope that everybody does well, um, with that starting next week. Um, and I bless everyone and give you extra support to help the kids during that time. Um, and just, thank you so much. Oh, wait, I, I am not going to, um, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, thank Mrs. Mulholland. I, I sent her an email already because I, I don't think I could say goodbye to her truly, uh, up here without tissues. But there's only one Mrs. Mulholland, that is for sure. Um, thank you for blessing our district, thank you for being you, um, and for just seeing all of our students, you know, and just really believing in every single one of them. Um, you have changed the culture for the better. You're such a positive person, you believe in our students so much, you believe in our teachers so much. You just have changed, uh, the environment and the culture for the better, and, um, you're even behind a legacy, so thank you for that.
Let's go. I'm excited. Um, I, I absolutely, I'm not as eloquent as Kelly, I absolutely agree with everything she said. Thank you to, um, our teachers and staff who are retiring. This is a wonderful school district, a wonderful town to live in, raise our children in. And I'm grateful for everyone that has a piece in their hospital or in their body. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Mulholland. Um, I agree, you know, what Kelly was saying, you have really truly left a legacy and, um, we're all better for it, and, uh, I wish you the best. And, I don't know, I just, I'm happy to see all the work that we're doing and, and the steps we're taking forward and, like, and it's going great together. Steve?
My comment, free. Um, I am very grateful to the staff, to the teachers, um, to the administrators. And, uh, welcome aboard to Lauren, I loved your analogy. And I couldn't be more happy and confident that night, uh, when we, you were part of the interview process. And I just see great things happening here, so thank you to everybody involved.
Uh, yeah, it's just, it's an exciting time, springs in the air. And, uh, and when you, when you see all the stuff that has gotten done in six months, um, and a day, uh, you know, putting together a budget that's relatively flat and has groups involved and all kinds of stuff, you know, it takes a lot of work. Takes a lot of commitment and sacrifice from the top to everybody that's in one week, um, and having those conversations. And, um, you know, just to rag on this one, I'll support, there was, uh, there was a moment, and I can't remember the exact moment, but there, there is some point where she was, um, making a presentation to the board and, and assembled a couple of figures. And it just, it just hit on, hit on me how much she cares about the children. You know, and I see all that she cares and, you know, but, um, you know, when, when you get up into administration, uh, to not lose sight of that and to, and to continue to remember and think about what I'm doing and saying matters, um, something that I think everybody care better for, you know, seeing that example, and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so.
Carl?
Um, obviously agree with what everybody else has already said, uh, so thank you, Mrs. Mulholland, and welcome, Mrs. Thomas. Uh, I'll just speak generally, you know, we moved here, uh, a couple of years ago from the school, so I was really happy to see there's, all that wasn't aligned. And there's such a sense of community and devotion to the school system. And, um, I come from a small town in Ohio, you know, we had something very similar, so I was hoping to, like, remind our kids. Um, so thank you to everybody for all that. Um, also, my daughter is four, so she will be enjoying like any other, so.
Okay, so Mrs. Thomas, I, I figured all these good things, welcome again, I hope you're motivated, inspired, so, uh, welcome again. Um, thank you, I'll echo Kelly a little bit, thank you to, for everybody who is retiring and, and all the years of dedicated service. Mrs. Wayne and I have worked together, I guess, for a long time now. Uh, I think I've been on the board for, so, I think it's my eleventh year on the board, I feel like I've been thanking Jody for eleven years. So thank you for that. And I'll, I'll just throw in, um, a couple of other thank yous. Uh, again, I think the, the bunch of stuffs maybe got a little bit lost in some ways, but thank you to Carrie and everybody in the finance committee, everybody who worked on the budget, because I know that's, I've been on that, that's a tough one, that committee. Um, and then thank you, I'll, I'll echo the thank you to the, the teachers and, and the staff and the administrators, two, two events, the, I think I mentioned this last time, I don't remember, I went to the PRM Junior National Honor Society, uh, which was really great, so thank you for everybody. Mr. Mango and Mr. Deuce, everybody at PRM, we did that. Went to the World Language Honor Society, um, at KHS. Yeah, the administrators and teachers did a, a great job with that as well, so, so thank you, everybody, for all that stuff that you, all the work and the time and things that you put in, for all this end of the year stuff that happens. And sorry, don't mean to leave, kill and stone me, bro, I'm just not really as familiar anymore with all the stuff going on there. I'm sure you guys have some great stuff too. So, so thank you for all that end of the year stuff that you guys, you know, do and contribute to, that's kind of behind the scenes stuff, but it's, it's very valued as, as we get through the last couple of months, so thank you for that.
Okay, I'm just gonna finish the, like, kind of what I always say, because they've covered everybody, um, so well. It's really all of my fellow board members and Mr. Mango and the effort that they put in, you know, we do mean a lot. And, uh, and we really, it's because we do love the town and mostly it's like one of those things, help me help you. And you help me help you, I can, I just, we just keep moving forward. And I really appreciate all the, the budget was a lot, and we did have a lot we were trying to accomplish with our goals this year. And we have a lot more we're gonna have to accomplish too, so there's gonna be some more tough decisions because unfortunately money doesn't grow on trees. I really thought it did when I was a kid, finding a money tree, but it doesn't. So, uh, we will have some more things we're gonna have to be, can seriously take a look at and, uh, so we can continue to move forward because we have some security issues that we're gonna have to deal with, um, to, to remain in compliance with. And I'm sure our architects are gonna find stuff we don't even know. I'm sure. But anyway, thank you all for coming out and for staying and participating. You are welcome to leave. I went to make motion for recess. Recess. Uh, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break and, uh, we're gonna stop training. If you wanna stay for board ethics training, you're welcome, I'll stay.